Alderman to order, will you please rise and recite the pledge of allegiance with me, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Roll call, please.
Yes, sir. Alderman Davidson.
Present.
Alderman Franklin.
Present.
Alderman Turner.
Present.
Alderman Mills.
Present.
Alderman Milner.
Present.
Alderman Chaney.
Present.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Present.
Alderman Fauch.
Present, present.
Mayor's airing.
All right, got some ceremonial matters this evening to take care of. It's always good to have ceremonial matters. First off on our list here is we got Culvers Crew Challenge Champions Proclamation. So if you're here with Culvers, come on up. What I want to do is I'm just going to let you go ahead and introduce you. Come on around. Yep, come around. Here you go, back over here. How about that? Let you go ahead and introduce yourself. Let you have that. And tell us a little bit about the challenge, too.
Sure. My name is Connor Hartnett. I'm the owner of the Culvers in Harrisonville and...
My name is Marie Arnold. I'm the general manager here at Culvers.
So the Crew Challenge is a year-long competition that takes place between all Culvers restaurants. This year, there was a little over eight hundred that qualified to be in that competition. It's based off of service metrics like those online surveys, as well as some operations reviews that are done by our corporate people from Culvers, as well as food safety standards as well. All those scores are tabulated and added together and put in a spreadsheet and all kinds of fancy stuff. And tells you which restaurant has the highest marks on all of those things. And this year, the Culvers in Harrisonville had the highest marks, and we were able to be the national champions of 2023 Crew Challenge, so. Yeah.
So, and I'll just tell you, it's okay if I hold this like this, right? Okay. I don't want to break your equipment, so. But let's just tell you a little bit, you know, about Culvers from my perspective anyways. You guys have been here how long now?
A little over two years, so, and December of twenty-one is when we opened.
December of twenty-one, awesome. So a couple of years. I'll tell you, I went out when you guys had your media day. You guys were in the top five out there. I got to meet Mr. Culver, talked to him a little bit as well. But let me tell you what is special about Culvers and about this award, and it says a lot about this young man and these people here that work out there, is that it's not about fast food, it's not about the burgers, it's about the people. And if you go out there, you can tell that, just from the service, and you can tell by people are happy to be there and work, you know? You can tell they're happy to be there, they like what they're doing, they love what they're doing. But I'll tell you, talking to Mr. Culver, it was amazing, because there was a lot of people from other, that owned other stores coming through and visiting as well. And everybody greeted each other by first name, even Mr. Culver. And I think he even mentioned that he knew you when you were running burgers out the cars, so. It was pretty amazing that, you know, here's a guy that owns this nationwide chain, and he knows these people by name, and he knows them personally. So it is truly, when their culture is about the people, it truly is. And what that means to a city with us, and I even told this to him out there when I was getting to talk to him, was that the values you guys instill in your employees out there, you're instilling to citizens that live in our communities out here. Some of those don't get those values at home. They're learning them at your store. Some of them get them at home, but you're reinforcing that there in your store. And so you are literally producing better citizens for us out here, the next generation to come in, lead our cities, and do things like that. So it really is something to be number one, but it really is something to be in the family that you guys are in there and what you bring to our city. So we appreciate you. So I'm going to read this now. Did all the talking now, just say it all in here, too. So Culvers Harrisonville wins gold, March eighteenth, twenty twenty-four. Whereas it is with great pride and appreciation that we acknowledge the exceptional contributions of Culvers, a cherished establishment within our local community. Whereas since opening their doors in twenty twenty-one, Culvers of Harrisonville has continually demonstrated an unwavering commitment to serve not only the patrons, but the entire Harrisonville community with compassion, intentionality, integrity, and generosity. Whereas beyond their culinary prowess, Culvers has become a cornerstone of our community, fostering a welcoming environment where individuals and families come together to share moments of joy, laughter, and comfort. Whereas Culvers has exemplified the true spirit of community engagement by actively supporting local initiatives, events, and charitable causes, thereby enriching the lives of those residing in and around Harrisonville. And whereas the dedication and hard work of Culvers team members and owner Connor Hartnett has been noticed not only by the Harrisonville community and this board of Aldermen, but also by the National Culvers Community, as they were awarded the gold designation in the twenty twenty-three Culvers Crew Challenge. Now therefore be it proclaimed that on this day, we extend our sincerest gratitude and admiration to Culvers and Mr. Hartnett for their outstanding contributions to our community. The City of Harrisonville is proud of the commitment to excellence demonstrated daily by Culvers of Harrisonville, and looks forward to the continuation of a long and prosperous partnership. May their legacy and legacy of excellence and generosity continue to inspire and uplift us all.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have a badge pinning for the fire department. And I'll let you talk a little bit on this, chief.
As you know, we've been working pretty diligently trying to get everybody back into place. We're within one now of being full. We got two new paramedics coming on board, or just graduated, a new one coming on board, and four more in school. So we should be pretty good when we're done. So Morgan Driggs is being promoted, or status changed from firefighter to firefighter paramedic, and will be pinned by her dad, Don. Come on up. Jake Meissen, also firefighter to firefighter paramedic, being pinned by his girlfriend, Madison. Come on up, you can stand in front. Madison just happens to be a Harrisonville firefighter EMT also, and works other places. And coming from is from Wyoming, combat medic, longtime medic, but new to Harrisonville. Josh Poff will be pinned by his wife, Megan. Megan, come on up here. Eric, you guys got your badges? Go for it, try not to draw blood. Welcome our new firefighter.
Congratulations, welcome. Appreciate you guys for sure. All right, yeah, just real quick, thank you all. We appreciate you becoming a team here in Harrisonville with us. Appreciate all that you do and all you're going to do for us, chief. Appreciate all that you're doing with the team out there as well, developing that. But I'd also like to thank the families of all these people up here wearing these uniforms, because I know that it's the families that make a lot of sacrifices, too. So we appreciate you just as much, and congratulations. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Hey. Thanks.
Stand up, Mike.
Okay, we have a public participation request. Ryan Sparks, if you can approach the podium, come on up. You'll have three minutes. If you could just announce your name and address, and then Alex Hill, I think you give him one minute and a thirty second.
I'll let you know when you've got one minute remaining.
What's the best way to request an additional three minutes? Because I think I'm right about four and a half minutes, or maybe four minutes.
Yep, just, we'll stop you at three, and then we'll put it up to the board, let them vote it. Yep.
Awesome, thank you. Let's see if it's coming through here. All right, good evening. My name is Ryan Sparks. I live at ten thousand eight East two hundred and thirteenth Street in Peculiar, Missouri. I'm a tenant in hangar thirteen at the Lawrence Smith Memorial Airport, and last spoke with you on February fifth. First off, thank you for your consideration for approving a fifty percent reduction in hangar fees during the runway project. During my last address, I asked that the city take a realistic approach considering the shape and age of facilities, as well as the location as they evaluate hangar pricing. In review of the February twentieth work session meeting minutes, the board proposals ranged from twenty-five percent to fifty percent, and even included common area maintenance fees, while the recommendations of city professionals started at seven percent. When looking at the rent of comparable airports, the City of Harrisonville was either on par or high at the current rates. I recognize that the fees have not increased in a while, however, they were high when they were first enacted and are still above average when looking at comparable airports in two thousand twenty-four. The driver for rent increase seems to be a push for the airport to become self-sustaining, which is not a city, state, or federal requirement. In fact, I'm not aware of any of the comparable airports that are self-sustaining. The City Airport's webpage cites that the airport has a three point two million dollar impact on the Missouri economy and creates forty jobs statewide. I would ask where that statistic plays into the drive for the airport to become self-sustaining, and I'm not against the airport being self-sustaining by any means, but just as relates to the rental increases. For many years, the city had available federal and state funds that were not utilized that could have helped fund projects to increase the quality and available facilities to ensure that the airport was as close to self-sustaining as possible. Recognize that to become self-sustaining, it first takes additional investment by the city, and that investment has not taken place in the past when it should have. In response to the common area fees, the board should be the first to recognize that the airport is public infrastructure and is not commercial real estate. Common area maintenance fees should not be a consideration whatsoever. With the addition, with the common area maintenance fees, let's see here. With the consideration of common area maintenance fees, let's discuss the city park and specifically the city lake upgrades. Were common area maintenance fees charged to fund public infrastructure that is also not self-sustaining? Public infrastructure is an asset to the city and the public, and should be recognized as such. The airport is open to the public regardless of whether there are tenants at the airport. There also seems to be a drive to compare the airports, compared to airports that are not comparable. I would like to talk through some of the services and facilities that the non-comparable airports have. They have runways of links acceptable to jet traffic. Many have multiple runways. Having even a single runway of proper length could increase jet traffic and help the city in their desire to become self-sustaining. Number two, taxiways. The airport does not have a taxiway while other non-comparable, and even a lot of comparable airports have taxiways for the runways, whether singular or plural. Fuel options, many other airports have a hundred low lead in Jet A.
First three minutes are up now.
I'd like to let him go ahead.
Are you good? All right, I think you're good. Three more minutes, sir.
Thank you. Fuel options, many airports have a hundred low lead in Jet A at a minimum. Under previous airport administration, the City of Harrisonville had an opportunity to purchase a Jet A fuel tank from Lifelight Eagle that would have guaranteed purchases from Lifelight. Number four, maintain hangars with walls. Our current hangars leak and are home to many different birds, specifically pigeons. My hangar currently does not have walls, allowing other tenants or thieves the ability to access the majority of the hangar via access from one door. I'm also one of many that have hangars with concrete jutting up at the entrance to the hangar. Number five, fencing for safety during operations and security outside of normal hours. The gate should stay open during normal hours to allow the public to participate at the airport with a keypad for access after hours. There have been multiple pilots with close calls with wildlife. One example is the Loves Gas Station. When the Loves Gas Station came to Harrisonville, their jet came into the airport, and on departure, they hit a deer. And so that's obviously a very expensive instance of a, you know, occurrence with wildlife. Another example would be a pilot at a Lee Summit that hit a deer on takeoff, damaging his landing gear and constituting an emergency landing on his return landing at Harrisonville. I've also personally seen turkeys on the runway as well, you know, in addition to deer. Number six, they have dedicated city staff for the airport, and they also have infrastructure for fixed base operators to offer additional services. And lastly, a safe airport entrance. So we currently use the shoulder of Seven Highway to access the airport, and it would be, you know, something that I think the city should discuss with MoDOT, you know, as in addition to that area, just to allow safe entrance to the airport. That concludes my address. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Next up, we have the approval of the minutes from Board of Aldermen Regular Meeting, March fourth, twenty twenty-four. Those were in your packet.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion from Alderman Chaney, with a second from Alderman Turner. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, those stand approved. Next is the Board of Aldermen Work Session Minutes, March fourth, twenty twenty-four.
Make a motion to approve.
I second.
Got a motion from Alderman Dorhoff, with a second from Alderman Franklin. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Those stand approved as well. First item up on the agenda items is Council Bill zero nine.
A resolution of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville to authorize the city administrator to enter into the Missouri Public Utility Alliance's mutual aid program.
All right, Brent.
Good evening, Alderman, Mayor, Mr. Ratliff. I'm here this evening to talk about the minor changes being made to the new revised MPUA mutual aid contract, so we can adopt and sign this contract. The changes being made to the new contract have been provided in your packets. I'm open to any questions anyone might have on this topic.
No questions? No questions? I'm not seeing any question.
Larry, looks like he wants to ask.
All right.
How often do we provide mutual aid?
It's generally every year. It depends on how bad the storms are, Larry, whether it's hurricanes out of state, or tornadoes in the Midwest, or just bad storms in general, ice storms. So it depends on, you know, weather a lot. So, but it is, it's frequent every year. We just had some mutual aid cities come help us on the last storm we had, which was very valuable to us, getting power back on, and it's, it's nice to have that. So.
All right, there's no other questions. I'll entertain a motion.
Make that motion.
Second.
All right, a motion from Alderman Davidson, with a second from Alderman Milner. Roll call, please.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Fauch.
Aye.
Alderman Chaney.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Mills.
Aye.
All right, Council Bill zero nine is now Resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero four. Next up are Aldermen and Committee Reports. We'll start with Alderman Chaney.
I guess the one thing I would want to ask of the board is we have a city hall worker here who is fighting breast cancer, and recently set up a GoFundMe page. And I had the idea, when I first come in, I would challenge everybody to a specific amount to donate to her. But I won't do that, but I will ask everybody here if they would be so kind as to help her out in their time of need.
Appreciate that, sir. Alderman Franklin.
I just wanted to remind everybody that this weekend, Millwalk Mall is the Easter Bunny photo op for your forever friends. We are operating from one to four, and bring your forever friends out with your kiddos, and have your pictures taken, and make some memories, and hopefully weather will cooperate. And then just to remind you, too, that next month, we'll have the Love the Harrisonville Square, then we have the Style Squared, which is a luncheon, and a fashion show to follow. And I believe that is also from twelve to four, and Barbie is the theme this year. So get your pink on and come on out with your grandkids and your daughters, and have a good time, have a nice lunch, and look at all the latest fashions that we have in our shops up on the square, so be a good time. And last meeting, I was remiss in not thanking Brent for helping. We had some light show going on up at the square early in the morning. All of them were blinking. And I called him, and he explained what was going on and took care of the issues. So I appreciate your time with that and your explanation, helping. Not that I don't like a light show.
Hey, that wasn't like at four o'clock in the morning, was it?
It was, it was early.
Was it? Oh, man. Then definitely thank you.
So, that's all I have.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Alderman Davidson. All right, thank you. Alderman Mills. Moving right along to Alderman Turner.
I just, I went to Washington DC last week with Missouri Municipal League. Went to the National League of City Conference. We spent one day down at the Capitol, got to meet with our congressman, and tell him how much we really love him.
Get to actually meet him, meet with him?
Couple of them, and then others was AIDS and, I don't know, but, but, no, we expressed our, there were certain bills and stuff that the government's, federal government looking at that's really going to help us, too. I mean, the rail safety, the budget, the bipartisan task legislation, and the workforce innovation, you know? Which, I mean, we're all struggling for, trying to find workers and stuff, so. I mean, there's a head of over three thousand attendees, and so we all were down at the Capitol. I mean, I'm sure when they see us, they, they run and hide, you know, because they got meetings throughout the day. But, I mean, it's, I mean, it was good, learned quite a bit and stuff, and hopefully maybe someone's got to point your cross, and maybe we'll see some change to help us.
Awesome.
That's about it.
All right, thank you, sir. Alderman Fauch.
I had a chance to stop by the fire station last week, and the chief gave me a nice little tour of the construction project. It's quite impressive what's going on out there. And I appreciate his insight and his, his comments, and so I'm really glad to see that project moving along. And I wanted to thank Mr. Ratliff for speaking to the Rotary Club last week on the state of the city. And he kept it short, and they didn't, they didn't throw him out, so.
I don't believe it. I don't believe it. So, hey, have you been, were you, have you been inside the EMT unit down there as a fire station before?
Only in the meeting room area. I've not, not had the whole grand tour.
Okay, yeah, I didn't know if you'd been in there before.
Of course, you know, my, I shouldn't say this, my comment to Brad afterwards was, why didn't we just tear this down? I mean, it is, it is a big project.
It is, yeah, yeah. All right, Alderman Dorhoff.
Yeah, just want to congratulate Culvers. Exceptional place to go eat. I've been to other restaurants that have been not nearly as good, and actually told the management, hey, you should take a field trip and take your employees and go to Culvers and see how it's done. So just kudos to them. Well-run place.
Thanks, sir. Alderman Milner.
I'm going to piggyback onto him. You know, when you stop and think about, they've only been here two years, and where the, where our owner Connor has started from, and worked every aspect of the company, and what a treasure they are, not just for the services they provide, but for the fundraising opportunities throughout our community that they provide, because they, they really, really support our schools. They even are a classroom partner within our buildings. So their staff is top-notch as far as community givebacks, so they deserve a huge kudos. There's usually one, once a month.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Yes, yes, ma'am. Alderman Franklin.
I wanted to also bring up, Park Board had their meeting last week, and Grant took me and Randy Jones into the indoor pool. And that is phenomenal in there. They have done a wonderful job painting. It looks much larger, it's cleaner. The air conditioning ducts, the relay lanes, everything looks top-notch. The repaint job, it is, looks wonderful. So, and the hot tub looks good. It's been repainted and reworked. So anyway, if anybody gets a chance, I would, if he's available, he'd be loving to take you out there. But it is really nice. And they opened last Friday, from my understanding, so.
Okay, awesome. Thank you, ma'am. All right, now the long-awaited report from the city administration.
It's going to be short, right?
Yes.
Define short.
So just reminding everybody, twenty ninth of this month, Good Friday, city hall will be closed. The spring brush drop-off is April fifth and April sixth, in the backside of the city park. Board of Aldermen Retreat is the twenty ninth. We first said, said the twenty fourth, and the mayor would like to put it to the twenty ninth. So make sure you put that on your calendars on the twenty ninth. Then Midwestern Regional Council is looking for proposals for the Federal Highway Administration funding programs. I list out those four programs that we will be going after several of the funds. Patty will be kind of our coordinator of all of those funds, especially since she chairs a lot of the boards on that. So we're hopeful to, there is a lot more funds that are being trinkled down through those programs this year. And so we're more hopeful about some of the spread of regional monies on those. The Beckerdite Stormwater Drainage Program, or project coming up on the seventh of March, we had the meeting. Five of the fifty-four property owners came to that meeting. So if you get any call, especially Alderman, that, that's your ward. Only five people showed up out of fifty-four that were sent letters way ahead of time to be at that meeting to give input on any of that project. So we'll do additional things from there, but that was the main open house for those people to attend. The other projects we had, we had a really good turnout, a lot of property owners. But this project, they only had five of those property owners show up for that. Then the airport runway reconstruction project, on the thirteenth, they started working. They're going to first do clearing of some trees this, next week on that. And as you know, next month is when they'll actually close the airport, but this is the first part where they'll be clearing trees. The city dam project rehabilitation project that we did, they're going to be coming out again to hydro seed those areas that didn't, didn't take. So you might see additional things out there at the city park. And then the Lake Harrisonville project is hopefully going to be done around the first of April. That's what we're working toward with the contractor. The Oakville Sewer Project started last week, last Monday. And as you all recall, that was an emergency repairs for the sewer line that collapsed through that area. The FEMA flood buyout project, March twenty-fifth, I'll be signing for three of those closings. And then they'll be setting up for the fourth one on another date with me. And then the fifth one will be sometime next year on the closing for that. The Royal Street Extension Project, want to remind everybody, because we keep getting questions about this quite a bit. It's planned to hopefully have questions about this quite a bit, it's planned to hopefully have the road project done by October twenty twenty-five. So if people say, where are you at in the project? The road project is to be completed in October of twenty twenty-five. The ball fields is hopeful to be open by March of twenty twenty-six. So we get questions about that all the time when you start doing dirt, well, October twenty twenty-five is when we're hoping to have the road completed and the ball fields to be ready by March of twenty twenty-six. Seems to come up a lot and we keep repeating those dates and then it comes up again and we repeat those dates and until the contractor tells us anything different, when we actually award the final contractor, then we'll put that information out. Alderman Franklin talked about the indoor pool, it does look a lot nicer, a lot more open and clean. New Kiwanis Playground at City Park, if you've not been by there, it is constantly full. There's a lot of the residents that are utilizing that park and actually had someone stop me today talking about how much nicer the parks are and the amenities in the parks, so a lot of good, a lot of good things going on in our park system. Police Department reported that the Missouri Republican Presidential Primary didn't have any problems, but they had over three hundred there at the community center. We had parking clear over into the county's lot across the street. Park staff didn't have any issues, it was very well-run and the police department didn't have any issues as well. The Democratic one is, Democrat one is happening on the courthouse this, on Saturday, I believe, and so we don't see any issues that are coming up on either one of those. Fire Department continues on the remodel, the old kitchen and the living room area is under construction now as we're doing this in the phases with our Fire Department and I want to give kudos to our Fire Department. There's, there's nights they're having to sweep off their bed with the construction debris and the dust and the chief will tell you, nobody's complaining. Everybody's very enthused and very happy that the station's getting done, but they are dealing with like anybody else would when you're doing construction where you live, it's always a pain. Burst Ridge, fourth phase, we have a new developer, Spalding Excavation, and they've already turned in some of their dirt plans, which include the second entrance being shown and staff has, Christine and their staff have met with them and they're going to be bringing in some of their plans here in the near future. So we're excited to see that going and also, community development staff met with the new developers for the Glen Eagle subdivision. So if you all recall, Regency Homes owned the south portion in that area and that has been purchased and the, the new ownership is planning on turning plans in to community development, maybe do some zoning changes, but mainly wanting to get that done and, and they are very much going to put the roadway in that we've talked about in utilizing the dam that we put in to be prepared for that. So we're hoping to see some activity and hopefully see some things in front of you all here in the near future on those plans. So a lot of building going on. Vine Street, all three businesses there on Vine Street are doing expansions right now and so more jobs, a lot of extension on buildings, so a lot of, a lot of economic development going on throughout the community. So it's good to see even with the current climate of the economy. And with that, Mr. Mayor?
Awesome, thank you, sir. No, that's good, good briefing. It was short. Thank you. Questions from the media? Nothing from the media, all right, thank you for being here, sir. All right, with that then, adjourned closed session?
Your Honor, I make a motion that we adjourn to closed session pursuant to RSMO six-ten-dot-zero-two-one, leasing, purchase, or sale of real estate.
All right, got a motion from Alderman Mills.
Second?
Second from Alderman Dorhoff, roll call, please.
Alderman Chaney. Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Alderman Mills.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Fauch.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Mayor Zaring.
All right. Aye. We are adjourned to closed session now.